I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Jeff Watson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Great to talk with you. I'd like to give you thanks for blessing us with such a beautiful day today and thank you for blessing us with so many gifts that we have here in our community and in the midst of Arkansas. For you to be able to be thankful for the opportunity to be here tonight to serve the citizens of Springdale, we ask that you please guide us in the latest of our deliberations and help us make the wise decisions. Lord, we ask that you be with all those suffering, continue with the suffering, suffering with illness, physical and mental illness, and we ask that you provide comfort and healing to those. Lord, we give thanks for all of your gifts which you've extended to our people.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. I will now call this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council to order. This is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. We do have large print versions of the agenda over here. Denise has them. If that would be helpful to anyone, feel free to get one. And now I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll. Denise?
Here.
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 All right, thank you. We're at item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each regular council meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If there are any residents in Springdale that would like to address the council, we ask that you make your way to the microphone, the podium. Please keep your comments brief and first clearly state your name and address and then understand that the council won't be taking action tonight on what you bring forward. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Council, you've had access to the minutes. Time to look over those. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
移到
Second.
Okay, a motion of second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. We're at item six. We're going to recognize the service of three former council members. I think we'll do them one at a time. Jim, if you don't mind going first, just meet me at the podium.
Thank you for being here.
All right, it's my pleasure. Certainly no stranger. Jim Reed served on the council, I think, for 16 years.
Thirteen.
Thirteen? Seemed like 16?
Yes.
All right. And, okay. And Jim actually stepped down at one point and then came back when we were, when the council was considering appointing a new member and Jim graciously said he would come and serve. He had no interest in serving beyond that, finishing that term, but we really appreciate that especially, Jim. And you've always been a great help and supporter on the council and you have been a true champion for the people of Springdale. This is a small token of our appreciation for your time served. There's your old...
My second old...
Yeah, the second one. And Jim, feel free to say anything if you'd like.
Well, I just want to say that it's been enjoyable serving the citizens of Springdale and working on this council. Thank you all so much.
Marita, you can come if you want. You don't want. Bring the family if you want. If y'all are, say, oh, some of you maybe, maybe not. Oh, come on. How you doing, Rick?
Good.
See you, ma'am. Twenty-two years?
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years. All right, I got this one right. Rick Evans has served the residents of Springdale for 22 years and we're so very proud and thankful for Rick's service and I could say the same thing I said about Jim, that Rick was always an attentive ear to our residents when they'd call and ask him and he always tried to make the best decisions for the residents of Springdale. And I know everyone joins me in recognizing and thanking Rick Evans. And Rick, there's a token of our appreciation and your nameplate. Feel free to say you thank you, Bob.
It was a privilege being with you guys. Jeff was on it from the very beginning with me and Mike's been on a couple of times with me, so, but I know I left in good hands, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Bring some of his family with him tonight and we know that, everyone up here knows, that we don't serve alone and that without the support of our family, it would be much more difficult work.
They grew up with it.
Yeah, they grew up with it, that's right. Thank you all for being here. Thanks. Kathy? Kathy J. Cox? Kathy? I put you last. You know why? Because I knew you wouldn't be here when we started. Kathy also, 22 years serving the residents of Springdale on the city council and many other ways besides. But Kathy, please accept as a token of our appreciation, this memento, this gift, and feel free to please say anything that you'd like to say. One last.
It really has been a privilege and an honor and so much fun and I'm so honored because of the confidence that the people gave me for 22 years to do the right thing for Springdale. I know that all the people in this room and all the people out in that hallway and all the people from the police to the fire, to the administration have done a fabulous job and I am so looking forward to the future for Springdale, Arkansas. I wish you all the best. I will be there to support you forever. Thank you again.
It's kind of like asking Gerald Williams who his best football team was, but, so I'm not going to say...
Mayor?
Yeah. I'm going to, what I'm going to say is that, I'm not going to say you're the hardest working council member, but you're right at the top and I know of no council member who's ever worked harder than you have for the residents of Springdale, so thank you. All right, thanks. We'll move on to item seven now. This is our annual report. Jill Dabs is on her way, the director of the Downtown Springdale Alliance, and Jill's going to give us a report and also, this will also double as our update that the council asked for when we put in the outdoor dining district.
Correct.
Okay? Thanks, Jill. It's all yours.
Mayor and city council and citizens of Springdale, it is my honor to present to you the Downtown Springdale Annual Report. This, before we get started, I just want to say, everything in this report is reflective of many, 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 many years of work by people like Kathy J. Cox and yourselves and the former council members that left here, many others that are not here anymore, to the work that we're going to see unfold over the next few years. Last year was unprecedented with the pandemic and other things that were going on and we never slowed down. When I started collecting the information and compiling everything that was going on downtown, the new businesses that were open, it was incredible to me and I hope you enjoy this presentation and take great pride in your downtown and the work that you've contributed and the support that you've given to it. So in 2020, we were halted on all events until the fall, but we were, we figured things out and we found out a way to have safe socially-distanced events and we hosted more than 5,000 people over the course of these four events. Live at Turnbo, Ozart Tober, we stretched it out from being a three or four-day weekend event to an all-month event. That was so successful, we plan to do that again this year. Dia de los Muertos moved from traditionally being at the Art Center, the inside at the Art Center of the Ozarks building to Shiloh Square. We had over 1,000 people there that day. It was a beautiful celebration and we are hopeful that they will choose to have it in that space again next year, the organizers of that event. And Christmas on the Creek. It was one of the, I was told it was one of the largest-attended events for Christmas on the Creek this year and I don't know, I've not been here, but that was, that was one that was said to me. And we added a few other events to that this year. We brought back the, well, the hot cocoa crawl was just smugs. We will bring the crawl back next year. And we had cycling Santas and a few other events that we'd not had in the past that we created as a result of the virus and they were all so successful, we're really looking forward to bringing them back this year. Turnbo Park and Shiloh Square. The city of Springdale has contracted with Downtown Springdale Alliance for the last four or five years to program Shiloh Square. We expanded that this past year to also include Turnbo Park and we are averaging 50-plus events a year there. We, of course, we were short a few of those this past year, but that's, we expect that to come back this year based on the reservations that we're already receiving. Another thing that you helped establish in 2020 was establishing, officially establishing the arts district. We've already seen investment in the arts taking place as a result of this. The creative culture is growing. Art installations are taking place and under, more coming out this year. Maker spaces are being developed and artists are being, local artists are being developed by talent that has been recruited to Springdale to support them. In 2020, we had numerous new neighbors. Cash, Interform, Natural State, Rockin Republic, Little Emma Apartments, James &amp; James, The Pits Barbecue. That's not all. Also, the famous hardware art installations, Rachel McClintox, Lofts at the Watson, Ozart Film and Video, Imprint Boutique, and Lottie Caroline's Boutique. These are all new businesses that were not here prior to 2020 and I think that is notable. I would, I would rival if there is any downtown in all of Arkansas and not many in the country that opened this many new businesses in 2020. So pat yourselves on the back for this. I think this is a huge accomplishment to all that's happening and continuing to happen in Downtown Springdale. Businesses and projects that are currently under development. We have Emma Midtown LLC, Springdale Downtown LLC, Maple Market, Ball House Beer Garden, Revival, Conquesos. Four new murals are underway soon, three new facade improvements and the Street Lake Ualla. I probably butchered that. And then these are existing businesses that are undergoing business expansion and growth. Fat Tire, Trailside Coffee, Engle and Volkers, Odd Soul, Downtown Acupuncture and Chinese Medicine, Black Apple Hard Cider, Big Sexy, Spring Street Grill, and the Springdale Groove. Another thing we spent a lot, many, many hours working on in 2020 was the Luther George Park redesign. This is a design excellence grant provided by the Walton Family Foundation. Currently, we have a capital campaign that is under development and going to kick off very soon and our goal is to break ground on this project before the end of the year. We also facilitated a number of grants in 2020. We have, we received a website grant from RVest Foundation, light pole banners, and open seating grant from the Tyson Family Foundation, facade grants from AEDC and Walton Family Foundation. Were not received in 2020, but we still continue to facilitate those grants and the last three facades are under construction now and should be finished before the end of first quarter. Mural grants, we received a beautiful new mural from Ozart and currently we have, we just recently announced four additional murals funded by the Walton Family Foundation and we have three more murals that are soon to be announced by the, funded by the Art Center of the, Art Center of the Ozarks. And we also received a DEI grant in partnership with three different foundations, Walmart Foundation, Walton Family Foundation, and the Tyson Family Foundation. We're in the process of implementing that this year. That brings us to the outdoor dining district. Thank you very much for your support. We were able to establish what we now call the outdoor dining district in Downtown Springdale. It went a long, long ways to support existing restaurants and bars and retail business. We had almost 10,000 to-go drinks served the first five months of the outdoor dining district. Police Chief Peters reported that there were zero incidents related to the district over that time period. Parks Director Chad Wolf reported zero increase in litter and trash management. Bars and restaurants reported increased sales. Retail businesses reported more foot traffic. New and expanding businesses are happening in the district and they have also reported that the reason they're locating here is because of the opportunity that the outdoor dining district provides them. So this has been a really good activator and economic stimulator for Downtown Springdale and has been very welcomed by the residents from what we've, the infinite feedback that we've received. Here's a few pictures from, from that and the fun that was had. Something we're going to be announcing in about the next week is a compostable cup project. It's in partnership with Food Loops. So we look forward to continuing a safe, welcoming, and inviting environment in our outdoor dining district with new and expanding businesses, more events, more music, more food, more fun, and more memories. And I just want to give a special thank you to the mayor, city council, public works, parks and rec, and public safety. Everything that we're doing downtown would not be possible without your continued commitment, investment, and support of Downtown Springdale. So thank you very much. I would like to come back to you all at your next committee and discuss, discuss the expanded duties that the Downtown Springdale Alliance has taken on under the contract and I'll be back next month sometime to discuss that. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you all very much.
Great job. Thanks, Jill. Appreciate it. All right, item eight. I'm going to turn over to our city attorney, Ernest Kate. Ernest?
Thank you. Item number 15 on the agenda is an ordinance vacating a portion of utilities on property located at 294 Trevi Fontana and the statute requires us to conduct a public hearing before we take out the ordinance. So is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this ordinance? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
All right. Thanks, Ernest. Item nine, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I'll move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for both A and B. Roll call, please.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 10, I'll go ahead and read it. A resolution approving the appointment of J. Max Van Hoos to the Water and Sewer Commission. I know J. Max and Heath Ward, the director, are both here. Heath, y'all have anything to say?
Briefly, J. Max Van Hoos has been unanimously recommended to the council by the commission. And if you know, J. Max has had a very lengthy career with Harps and is now the executive vice president of that organization. And that company has grown in great numbers over the last few years as Harps has expanded into other states. It started here in Springdale. J. Max is a Springdale, Springdale native. He is a resident of Springdale, which is the most important thing for this job. And he has a degree in engineering and a master's in business administration from Kansas State University and the commission feels that he is very well qualified given his experience in commerce and engineering.
Great. Commission did a great job putting J. Max forward. J. Max, thank you for your willingness to serve. So entertain a motion?
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further comment or questions? Roll call, please, Denise?
Fugierus?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks again, J. Max. Thanks, Heath. All right, item 11, I'm going to turn over to our finance committee chairman, Jeff Watson.
Thank you. The finance committee met last Thursday evening and had several items brought forward tonight. First one is item 11A and it's a resolution and the title to the resolution reads, "A resolution authorizing the purchase of property located at 400 Park Street, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas." That resolution was forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval.
There's one correction, mayor, that it's not owned by Northwest Medical Center, but the Northwest Medical Center Hospital Auxiliary.
That's right. Yeah, Ernest, can we make that change, please?
We can. Actually, it was, it did read that originally, but the attorney representing the hospital suggested that it be changed back. So I'd be happy to make that change.
Word we got is we're dealing with the...
Auxiliary.
The hospital was instrumental in connecting us and helping, helping find them another place, but, okay. So we will, we'll make that change. Notice too, for folks watching, this, this amount, $235,000 purchase price and the subsequent demolition of the building will be paid for out of a portion of the city's CDBG funds. So...
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further comment or questions? All right, Denise?
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Thank you. Item 11B had to do with purchase of some property for Dixland Road development and the title to that resolution is, "A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire a portion of land from Trinity Grace Church of Northwest Arkansas for the Dixland Road Project, Project Number 18BPS14." That resolution was also forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about that, Ernest?
Anything to add, Ernest, on that one?
No, the, as was said at the committee, finance committee meeting, the property owner provided an appraisal that provided the justification for the increase in compensation.
I'll make a motion, the resolution passes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Hey, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Thank you. Item 11C also had to do with the settlement of two condemnation lawsuits with the same party, having to do with the property being condemned on Gene George Boulevard. The title to that resolution is, "A resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle two condemnation lawsuits wherein Steve Gills and Linda Gills are defendants." That resolution was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. You have anything to add, Ernest?
Just for the folks at home if they're wondering, this, this case, these two cases went to court order mediation and this proposed settlement is a result of that mediation and it is based on reasonable evidence to, for the additional compensation as well.
I'll make a motion that the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Anybody in the room? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Thank you. Item 11D has to do with participation by the city with state aid street program for funding of three projects. The title of that resolution is, "A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to utilize state and street monies for the following project." And then it, I assume that's the entire title, correct, Ernest?
Yes, Springdale overlay.
For the Springdale overlay, okay. That, that resolution was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. Do you have anything to add on that, mayor?
Yeah, Jeff, the, for those not familiar, I know I mentioned this at committee, the state aid street money is, it came into being for cities with the passage of the half-cent sales tax back in 2012. And it's been a very beneficial program to this, to cities of all sizes in the state of Arkansas. Springdale has, we received one grant for some streets north of Huntsville and west of, West End, some neighborhood streets that needed significant work. So this, this would be our, those were completed a few years ago and then this would be our second grant. This, this project has been turned over to the state aid committee and, and we don't know exactly when we'll be approved for funding, but the, the rules say, state that cities, I think over 50,000, maybe it's over 20,000. Anyway, we're over and we'll be required to pay a 10% match. So it's still a, still a great deal. It's 90% money for an important overlay project that we, we can do in the, hopefully, near future.
I'll make a motion, the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Thank you. The final item from the finance committee had to do with purchase of two additional tracts of property on Downham Road. The title to that resolution is, "A resolution authorizing the purchase of two tracts of property located on Downham Road, Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas." That resolution was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
This is a, this is a two-acre parcel that will allow us to, it's, it's on the market now, so that's why the timing of this is what it is and it will allow us in the future to, to build a road project or road improvements that we know we'll have to do and it'd be much, that's going to be much less expensive to do if we own that property.
Move, resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Denise? Roll call.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. And thank you, as Patsy comes forward, Planning Commission reporting recommendations, Director of Planning and Community Development, Patsy Christie. Patsy?
Once again, you can see it's a busy month. It's been a really busy month. I can't tell that it's slowing down any at all, if you want to know the truth, but that's not bad. Okay, guys, my clicker's not, there we go. Okay?
Got it.
The first item is rezoning a 665-acre tract at 408 North Thompson Street. The request is to rezone this property from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5. The reason for the request is they want to put a drive-in Starbucks at this location and so it has to be a C5. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same meaning the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining
be our second grant. This, this project has been turned over to the State Aid Committee, and, and we don't know exactly when we'll be approved for funding, but the, the rules say, state that cities, I think over 50,000, maybe it's over 20,000. Anyway, we're over, and we'll be required to pay a 10% match. So it's still a, still a great deal. It's 90% money for an important overlay project that we, we can do in the, hopefully, near future.
I'll make a motion, the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, Kerry eight zero.
Okay, I'm not working again. Somebody can, can somebody upstairs, okay, advance it, keep going. Keep going. Okay.
This is the next request. This is for a 2.16 acre track located at 529 East Don Tyson Parkway. The request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to medium density single-family residential, single-family residential district SF3. The planning commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to medium density, single-family residential district SF3 and declaring an emergency."
I move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, Kerry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone property located at 3161 North Thompson Street, 4.62 acres. The request is to rezone it from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency."
The ordinance pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further comments or questions?
This is the one that has the auction house on it, right?
Used to. Building's gone. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, have they, have they submitted a plan yet?
Yes. We have a large-scale development plan for development of that piece of property.
I thought I'd seen it. Looks good. Okay.
It is a landscaping business. It's going in there. Yeah.
Okay. All right. We have, any other comments or questions, anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, Kerry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone 4.78 acres located at 964 Mastry Road. This is actually at the end of Harbor Avenue and 112. The request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Move the merge clause be adopted.
Okay.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, Kerry eight zero.
Okay.
I think we're out of order, but the next one is the one that is for the tandem lot split for the bur oak one we just did, and I, there's not a slide in here that shows that split that's in there, but there, as I said, there are splitting off this one and a half acres along the south side of the property, and it is a tandem lot because it doesn't have frontage on a public street. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use at 7132 Burr Oak Road for Brian Kay and Shannon, our Passmore has set forth in ordinance number 4030."
Make a motion, the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
My map looks a little bit different than the one that's up there. Anybody else?
Yeah, it is different. It's different from the one before. Is it the same legal?
It's the same legal description, yeah. It's just that the tandem lot is to create that lot on the bottom. The house to the north of it is not part of this track, but it has an access easement across it, and so we had to include that on both, and that may be what you're seeing in your packet.
Well, no, it just doesn't have that little...
Triangle.
Oh, that little triangle, okay. Well, we had some discussion about whether that belonged to the Passmores or this, and the legal description we got in at the last shows that that's what it is. And so that's, that's the legal description that we're looking at.
So it's the same legal on both, though?
Yes.
Was there another easement that, on this?
There's another easement across that that gives access to that house to the north of it that, and there's also a sewer line that goes through there. I talked to Springdale Water just the other day. There's a sewer line that goes across there. There's a water line that went across there that hasn't been shown. So the, the tandem lot split itself, the lot split's gonna have, have some work done to it because we don't have all the easement shown on it. But this would just authorize it to be split and create that other lot once we get through that. Other details, they have to figure out how to get water and sewer to it, and it's across the road, and there's some issues with how they would extend it. So we still have to take care of that before they can actually split the property. It's not changing ownerships. I think that they want to build another house on that lot for other family members to be on there, but it still has to be handled as a tandem lot.
Okay.
It's kind of a strange area out there because you get close to the lake. There's the big power line easement, there's some flood plain, there's some area that's controlled by game and fish with Lake Elmdale, and so there's all kinds of things going on in this agree- that lease agreement has to remain in place. And if it goes away, then the conditional use for the horses kept in an SF one zone goes away with it. Yes. And it is a minimum three years and it has some automatic renewal clauses into it. But, you know, if it- and it can't be transferred to somebody else, they would have to come back to the Planning Commission and the Council to move it to someone different. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use at Eighty-seven Twenty-seven East Wagon Wheel Road for Dominic and Isabel Mayrick has set forth an ordinance number forty-thirty, and it is a use unit thirty-six in an SF one zone."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken. Just to make sure, Mayor, so if we vote for this, the condition of maintaining the lease is what we're voting for as well?
It would be- it's part of the agreement.
Okay.
Right. It is- the conditional use is conditioned on that that lease stay in place to have horses at that location. You know, we do conditions with conditional use for other things, this just happens to be the one. And we have that filed on record in the Planning Commission office and it will be filed as a lien on that property. That's the only way you can have it operated, so.
Where is this property?
Uh, it's just to the west of the cemetery there on, uh...
Wagon Wheel.
Wagon Wheel.
No.
What is East Wagon Wheel? I don't know.
It's where it comes around, you know, where the Brush Creek Baptist Church is and the cemetery is across the street. It's the next property to the- to the west of that. If you turn and go on around on Wagon Wheel Road, it's the next property next to it.
You would think, Jeff, it's West Wagon Wheel out there, but it's not.
Wagon Wheel is really unusual or mixed up, depending on your point of view.
Right.
It's kind of hard to track if you want to know the truth.
And there's a Zion Road out there?
Uh, but it's further on out. They came in when we annexed in some of that area out in there too. Yeah, there's some unique situations out there, yes.
That's the Little Rock Church there on the right, correct?
Yes, in the Brush Creek- in Brush Creek Cemetery, isn't that what it's called?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Been there forever and always, yeah.
So my quest to someday do a extension of Wagon Wheel might not work where we have an East Wagon Wheel.
Well, it has- it's on the master's street plan to extend it, but we could also- might have to rename some of it. And that might need to be done anyway because I think it's really confusing to figure out where you are on Wagon Wheel Road, but, yeah.
This is basically where it picks up west of the quarry, I guess.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. You come over the bridge there by the church and you can curve and go back to the west or you can go north. And this is after you curve and go back to the west and it's on the backside of the- and the lift station is out there on that piece of property too, so. Doesn't look- looks like a barn, but it's a lift station.
Yeah.
It's near fifty-sixth, North Fifty-sixth.
Yes.
Close, yes.
Yeah.
Fifty-sixth would be further on down and on the right side of the picture.
If Fifty-sixth ever continues north to- if we ever get a connection with the Springdale Northern Bypass, this would come very close to it.
Or depending on where you tie in through the quarry, it could go either direction on that because you've got to get past the quarry when you get-
Right.
Because a lot of that up in there has been quarry for years and, yeah.
Okay, I think we had a motion and a second. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero. The next item is for a conditional use for a use unit forty-four, which is a mobile vending in a C-two district located at forty-four oh seven and forty-four oh nine South Thompson. They're requesting to actually put the mobile vending unit in the parking lot just to north of the Athletic Club. We've looked at the plans for that. They have additional parking or the adequate parking to meet all those standards. Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use for a mobile vending with the following conditions. Maintain and operate between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. No obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation of any other use on the site. Maintain on the site a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. The health certificate is required. Display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. Sound any device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Keep vending sites clean and free of paper or refuse of any kind generated from the operation of this business. All trash or debris accumulating within twenty feet of any vending site collect and deposit into a trash container.
Patsy, is a food truck actually going to sit on the parking lot right there next to the northwest?
It's going to sit in that parking lot area right in here, kind of in the middle of this parking lot. I don't know that this parking lot's been used a lot lately. But they're setting up kind of on this side of that parking lot to have the adjacent spaces over here that are available and they'll still be parking spaces. The discussion at Planning Commission meeting is those who are playing golf will have a place to cut across and get something neat if they're hungry while they're out there, so.
If I'm playing.
Or if you lose a ball, lose it that direction so you have an excuse to go get one, so, yeah.
Need a new car path.
(laughing) They were giving Dr. Compton a bad time about he would be the one that would need to go pick up food from over there at Planning Commission meetings, so.
Was unanimous, right?
Uh, I wrote it on here, just a second.
Yeah, I think I saw this.
It was nine zero.
Yes.
Is water and electric being ran under?
No, they have to be self-contained as far as water and wastewater is concerned. I think they would be- there's a power pole that will be set so they can have power, but they will also have a generator too. There's not going to be any permanent utilities put to this location. And it's granted to this mobile vending unit at this location only. They can't transfer it to anybody else without coming back.
Is there a time limit on the conditional use or?
As long as they stay in operation, it can continue. If we get complaints or problems with it, then we would bring it back to the group to look at whether or not that conditional use needs to be revoked. And that's the way all conditional uses work.
What if they start off there, pull off for a while and come back? Is that conditional use still applicable?
Technically, yes, because the ones that we had approved for the Shave Planet, they come and stay during the summer, they take them off during the winter, they come back next summer, and we don't have to go back and do another one, as long as it's the same operator and the same truck that we saw before.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
I have a question. Who is the actual applicant? It's not the owner of the property, is it?
No, it's the person who's going to operate the truck itself. Maria Hernandez is the operator of the mobile vending unit and the conditional use is given to her. But the property owner has to sign off on the application saying that they are agreeable for it to be there. And- but she is actually the applicant and it's given to her at that location.
Who is the owner?
I think it's the people that own the-
The gym, right?
Phil's was there.
Was there.
Yeah, that own the fitness- the fitness place that's there, yeah. I can go look it up if you need exactly who it is.
Is that how we always do conditional uses?
Usually it's the owner that does-
Probably the property owner?
Yes, you have to have a sign off by the property owner before we even consider it. I mean, we can't just let mobile vending units go in anywhere. So there has to be that agreement between the property owner and who's bringing in the truck and set it there and that- and there has to be a site plan that both of them are agreeable of what parking spaces that you are designating and if power's going to be run to it, how that's going to be worked. But that- we do that on everyone. Now, if we do a food truck, which is different, then the operator of the food truck court itself is responsible for bringing the trucks in and out and we don't get into that business. But this is a single mobile vending unit at a single site. It's not a food truck court. We've had them in Shave Planet.
Yeah, like in the parks, parking lot.
Right, and we've had a couple of barbecue places out by MJ's and we've had- we have one now at the Big Ten Lot on Seventy-one. And I was trying to think if there- I think there's one more, but I don't remember where the last one is. Nobody's set up one yet this year, but, you know, those are the locations we've had.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero. Did it again. Can I go back? Okay, the last item is a request for a waiver of a sidewalk being installed in connection with Forty-seventy-eight Carriage Crossing, which is a single-family dwelling being built by Trey Thompson. His requirement would be to build a sidewalk across this little piece right here that attaches to Carriage Crossing. He's asking for that. I put a revised resolution on your table because I went back and looked at the minutes and the Planning Commission actually recommends denial of this waiver request. It's a very small area. So the title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements, Drainage Curbs Gutters and Sidewalks is Set Forth in Ordinance Number Thirty-seven Twenty-five to Trey Thompson in Connection with Forty-seven Eight Carriage Crossing, a Single Family Dwelling." And the Planning Commission recommends option two, which is deny the waiver.
Are there any other sidewalks on Carriage Crossing?
The sidewalks were installed with the development as it was made. That this is just one little piece that doesn't have a piece on it.
See, it's got sidewalks.
Now, I think you can see that it has sidewalks. Now, I don't know if it has sidewalks all the way down on the north side down to the street, but it has throughout the rest of the subdivision.
It start- I went and looked at it today. It starts, if you see the driveway right there on four one four four, that's where it stops and there are utilities sitting right there in front of the sidewalk. There's electric boxes, so enabled- in order to do a sidewalk, he would have to move those electric boxes. There's- I think there's three different services right there.
Or go around them.
And go around them.
You'd have to swing- I don't- I don't know. I didn't- I didn't look at that, but.
And I- we didn't go out and look at all the details, but we could look at whether or not you could actually relocate it either closer to the curb to make that connection or on the other side of the boxes. We wouldn't ask him to relocate the utilities. That's unreasonable to ask that part.
Because they're right at the end of that- of that sidewalk that's existing.
So they're wanting to not build a sidewalk on that little bitty-
Right.
-part of Carriage Crossing.
And their driveway comes through there too, so it's not a lot of sidewalk on either side.
Their driveway will go through there.
Yeah, because that's how they access that lot to the north is that- through that driveway. We did a conditional use for a tandem lot because it doesn't have minimum frontage on a public street.
And the sidewalk on Carriage Crossing, is it on the curb or is it off?
No, it's off the curb. I think it's got a two-foot green space.
Two foot?
Yeah.
So would those utilities be within that vandal or do you know?
Yeah, if you see that- you can see on there the sidewalk and the neighbors driveway.
Yeah.
And if you look right at the end of the sidewalk, there's three or four boxes right where the sidewalk would have to be. I think you would probably have to rip-
Would they fit in that two-foot space though is what I'm asking, do you know?
I think they're further off of the curb than that, where they wouldn't all fit in that two-foot space, if that's the question you're asking. But I think the sidewalk would have to go around it and probably go to the north to be able to go around those, yeah.
They would probably back it up and demolish some of the existing. If it butts right up against them, they'd probably go back, take some of it out so they could start their curve early.
It may have to go to the south. If you look at it from a satellite view, it would have to go by the road to make it work.
Closer to the road.
I mean, it would have to be on the gutter of the road.
Why could it not more-
It'd have to be on the curb is what you're saying.
On the curb.
Why could it not go around the other way?
If you look at the map, you'd have to circle it back about probably seven foot to the north to be able to make it around because of how the road curves right there.
Okay.
If you have a satellite map, you can see it. That was my concern is that there is- there's a lot going on right there where he's going to have an issue.
Well, would it be possible to build it on the curb, Patsy?
We'd yes on that one, yes.
I don't know if it would be up to the length requirement, the width requirement. It's just an odd- it's an odd space and it's got utilities right there.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
There's a person- is the petitioner here with pictures?
I did not see him. He knew it was going to be standing in the direction to deny, but I did not see him.
Anyone here to speak to this from the audience?
I talked to the neighbor and they didn't really care, which they're standing out there. They didn't care.
Well, the only problem is with not doing it is that someday we might make the property to the-
The east.
And I can't tell what's going-
It'd be to the east.
We might make them do it, so then you'd have a-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ernest, would it be possible to table this until we get photos?
You can. Well, it's set for tonight.
Yeah, and everybody- I'm- move this resolution be adopted as option two.
Second.
Okay, everybody clear what that is? That denies the waiver, so it upholds the Planning Commission's recommendation. That's the motion and the second. Any other comments or questions? And he's not here to speak, so I guess we'll vote.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
No.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carrie six two.
All right, we're at item thirteen. We had a committee of the whole. Jeff, did you take that?
I did.
You want to go ahead with these?
The council met as committee of the whole Thursday night as well. And item thirteen was the first item that was before the committee of the whole. And title to that resolution is, "A Resolution Authorizing the Grant of Water/Sewer Easements to the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission Across Property Owned by the City of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas." I think that's out there around Shaw Park, right?
No, this is the one on Martin- the end of Martin Drive. It's a little parcel that at one time there was going to be a lift station, but there are some facilities there.
Okay.
And the Water and Sewer Commission just wants to make sure there is-
Yeah, that one you're thinking of just coming to parks.
All right. That resolution was forward to council with recommendation for approval.
Make a motion that the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
Second item before the committee of the whole was also a resolution granting an easement. The title to that resolution is, "A Resolution Authorizing the Grant of an Easement", I'm sorry, "A Resolution Authorizing the Grant of a General Utility/Water/Sewer Easement Across Properties Owned by the City of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas." And that resolution was forward to council with recommendation for approval.
Jeff, I'm on B.
Am I reading the same one twice?
(laughing) Yeah, we're on B.
I apologize.
That's right.
Thirteen B?
Thirteen B, uh-huh.
I apologize. Let me start all over.
Been distracted this week, so.
Yeah.
(laughing).
"A Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of Property to the Springdale Public Facilities Board." There we go.
Yeah. This was, uh, yeah, the Springdale Public Facilities Board donated the land on the corner of Huntsville and Conneer, I think, for, uh, for Station now opened, Station Eight. And there was a pretty good piece of property left that we didn't need and we're just being good neighbors and appreciative and giving that back to the Public Facilities Board so they can hopefully market to someone else that can use it.
Make a motion and the ordinance pass, or the resolution pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, item fourteen, Parks and Recreation Committee report, Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Parks and Recreation last week, we've got two items, two resolutions actually before us. Both were recommended for approval. I'll read the first one.
I've already read the second one.
(laughing) Yeah, you've done it for me. Uh, first one's a resolution designating a project for use of funds contributed by the Springdale Public Facilities Board. Luther George Park Improvement Project is hereby designated as the project to receive the contribution. And I'll let the mayor elaborate on it since he's kind of had his fingers crossed that we would back him up on this forever.
(laughing) Yeah, I've been talking about this for a long time, trying to commit two million dollars. I know I couldn't do that without ultimately coming to you all and y'all appropriating it. So this basically appropriates the gift, the contribution we will get from the Public Facilities Board in the future of two million dollars. This appropriates that and just designates that it can be- it will be used toward the Luther George Park improvements. That will really help those going out, trying to get- ask for contributions and funds for those potential donations, those making those donations to know what the city's committed to. This will, um, yeah, and we just gave- hey, we just gave a piece of property back to the Public Facilities Board. That's one more they can sell to help get to this two million, so they're going to-
And Mayor Jill Devs mentioned they haven't started the capital campaign yet for Luther George Park and their intention is to raise the ten million dollars for construction of this. And as I stated in the committee meeting, my only reservation is to make sure it's understood that this will be the maximum contribution that the taxpayers make because that is- that's going to be a publicly funded or a privately funded park and this will be our maximum of our contribution, which will be coming from the Public Service Commission, which is paying back the funds that we gave them initially ever get started, so they're just paying us back.
Okay.
I think there was also something that you mentioned about if they didn't have the property-
That'll be something that the council will need to decide. I wanted to be upfront, you know, there's no guarantee that by the time we need this money, which we think will be, if Jill's correct and the fundraising goes like we hope it will and the construction begins by the end of the year, it would probably still be at least this time next year before we would actually need the two million from the city.
In the event that they haven't made their contribution and the city does make it, then they can be reimbursed from the public facility funds as previously stated. So again, it's a maximum of a two million dollar commitment of taxpayers' funds that we're talking about.
Either way, this contribution is going to pay our two million dollar contribution to the park. It's just whether or not we have to float a little of it until we get the full two million dollars from the Public Facilities Board.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, don't we? We don't have either? Okay.
I make a motion and the resolution pass. Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Starts with contributions. Guess that works.
I think those do.
Okay. Okay, Denise.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, our second one on the agenda tonight, like I said, it was recommended for approval as well. "A Resolution Authorizing the Grant of a Sewer Utility/Water and Sewer Easement Across Properties Shaw Park", partials two one dash zero zero one six seven dash four seven one and two dash zero zero one six seven dash five four five owned by the City of Springdale. It's more or less a formality, I think. I move the resolution pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Park's looking great. We'll have an opening out there hopefully before long.
It's real good.
Um, all right, Denise?
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, item fifteen. Uh, let's see, I'm going to let Ernest take this one.
Thank you. This is an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of utilities located on property in Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas to declare an emergency and for other purposes. This would- there's a map attached on page one oh five. It's vacating one hundred and thirty-seven square feet of this utility easement.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Has emergency clause?
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
About the ordinance emergency clause, Carrie eight zero.
All right, item sixteen, I believe is yours too, Ernest.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas. Properties located at twelve oh five Crutcher in two thousand and seven A Cypress.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there anyone that needs to speak to these properties? Either of these properties? Okay, seeing none. Any other questions, Council? All right, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Has emergency clause?
Emergency clause, okay. Motion on emergency clause?
It doesn't state it in the ordinance, no?
It's in the, yeah, it's down there.
Yeah, it's not on here, but it...
It's on, yeah, it's on page one oh seven, emergency clause is at the end of the ordinance.